You know, you're a real funny man. You should get on the stage.
Next one leaves for two.
You need to get on the stage.
I'm an engineer.
I retired. I retired with... She can't shift all that effort in. They took everything else away. They used their money. They were going to charge me.
After retirement.
Oh, God, yes. Oh, when it came in, I had it for 25 years present. But I had a fatback insurance that made some... Would be not at... Congress looked like welfare insurance. Mine was... Of course. Of course, in my... Oh, yeah. Somebody was... The engineer who were making... I had it. I have never had to fight so much. To keep somebody that was free.
Yeah.
Well, you can't...
Who's that? You want to?
I didn't realize.
Max Ron.
You took mine, not your own.
Good evening. Tonight, we will call the Monday, May 2nd city council meeting to order. Heidi, roll call, please, for determination of quorum.
Laurenti, Wright, Weifenbach, Doyle. Lewis. Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have invocation. We have Trish Jurgensen, please, with us tonight. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Good evening. As usual, on Monday afternoon, before I open an invocation, I open the word and ask the Lord to give me Scripture. And this is what He gave me this afternoon out of 2 Timothy 2:1 through 4. Therefore, I exhort, first of all, that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of all thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all goodness and reverence; for this is the good and acceptable in the sight of the Lord, our God, our Savior, who desires all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of truth; for there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the Man Jesus Christ. So, God, we give you thanks on behalf of all who are gathered here today for the amending abundant blessings during this spring season. We ask for your measure of health over all to fulfill their callings, that you would be involved in useful work as these council members uphold their responsibilities with greatest integrity. We ask for obedience to promote peace and order and justice. We pray for Mayor Allender, in particular, who can't be with us tonight, for this assembled council, and for various levels of city officials. We are asking that you would graciously grant them a sense of peace and welfare and true needs of the people, a thirst for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around Rapid City. In your name we pray. Amen.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please? Got a motion, a second, to adopt agenda as written. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Those opposed? All right. If I could, please, we have two proclamations to read. If I could get all council leadership down up front with me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Our first proclamation tonight will be written by... Read by Alderman... Alderwoman Amanda Scott. It's the wildfire prevention month.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Rapid City desires to provide an environment safe from wildfire while protecting the health and safety of its citizens, including all properties situated therein, and whereas wildfires threaten the environmental, economic, and social well-being of Rapid City residents while challenging firefighters' efforts to protect life and property, and whereas wildfire suppression costs represent only a small portion of overall economic impacts and do not reflect the total cost of catastrophic fires, and whereas the residents of Rapid City have the responsibility to recognize the high risk of wildfire and institute safe and early evacuation plans, increase their homes' resistance to wildfire, and create fire-adapted communities to increase the safety and survivability of the public and emergency personnel, and whereas wildfire awareness month is an important opportunity for Rapid City residents and all South Dakota communities and fire service agencies to reduce the risk of wildfire, increase firefighter safety, and enhance public safety and awareness through education on fire safety, preparation, and prevention. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Steve Allender and the city council of Rapid City, the month of May 2016 is proclaimed wildfire awareness month. In Rapid City, the theme for this year is do your part before wildfires start. This is a call for residents of Rapid City to educate themselves and to take action to reduce the wildfire threat to their homes and help their community move toward becoming a fire-adapted community. Thank you. And Chief, would you like to say anything?
Well, thank you very much. And I appreciate both Governor Dugard's efforts in recognizing May as wildfire awareness month, and also the city of Rapid City and our leadership for also taking the step to provide this executive proclamation. And obviously, anybody who's lived in the Black Hills for some time realizes that wildfire is something that we came to know in the Black Hills. It was here long before any of us ever settled the Black Hills. And so, this is extremely important to Rapid City as human development or the city of Rapid City continues to expand into those forests or those wooded areas. We live in a community that will face wildfire. We face wildfire every summer. And so, it's not only a job for the elected officials and government or the fire departments to play an active role, but also to encourage the citizens to play their part in helping us protect their property. And there are grant funds available, both locally and regionally and through the state. And if you feel like you live in one of those areas and you feel like you could do more to prepare your property to sustain a fire, if one should approach, we have a number of different programs. So, you can always contact the Rapid City Fire Department or your local fire department in your jurisdiction to get more assistance. So, thank you.
And thank you. And as a reminder, too, although Chief Mulderburn said you can contact the fire department, you can also contact the mayor's office. They've got great resources to redirect you to the appropriate resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Mulderburn and Amanda. Next up, we have the proclamation for motorcycle awareness month. Is there a Jigs Cressy here? Please come up. This is a pretty tough crowd tonight. First words out of Chad Lewis's mouth to me was, where's the mayor when we need him? So...
I think we'll do all right. How are you doing? Okay, another proclamation for the evening. Whereas the motorcycle has been an important part of recreation, transportation, and tourism in Rapid City and western South Dakota, and whereas the motorcycle has contributed to governmental activities nationally as well as locally, both in wartime and peacetime, and whereas motorcycle ownership has reached over 8 million in the United States today with 12,674 motorcycles in Pennington County alone, and whereas it is important for the citizens of Rapid City to be aware of motorcycles on the highways and recognize the importance of sharing the roadway, and whereas motorists should have a special awareness of the vulnerability of motorcyclists, and whereas education and safe riding habits are worthy of special recognition, and Rapid City is located in one of the four safest states for riding motorcycles in the United States, and whereas the month of May begins an annual renewal of motorcycle enthusiasm. Now, therefore, I, Charity Doyle, on behalf of Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Rapid City, South Dakota, and encourage all residents to share the road with everyone to ensure the safety of everyone.
I just want to thank the city council and the mayor for this. We also have a proclamation from the governor. As through these proclamations and the campaigns that we carry on throughout the month of May, where we hope to reduce the number of fatalities and accidents for motorcycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is general public comment. It's a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. I have two speaker request forms for general public comment. I will first ask Bonnie Redden. Come to the podium, please.
Over here?
Yes, please. Then we'll ask you to state your name and address, if you would, please, for the record.
My name is Bonnie Redden. I live at 728 Spruce Street here in Rapid City. About, oh, I don't know, five to seven years ago, I walked away from politics because I was so sick of it, I couldn't even sleep at night. And the other day, up pops that... What do you call that football game that they play? Soccer. Here we come with this soccer field. I went out there and I looked at that thing. A half a million dollars for lights on that thing? And those people never collected barely enough money to have a tiki torch out there. You guys need to look at what you're doing with taxpayer money. That was the biggest waste of everything across the board. I went out there and walked on that thing the other day. It is still a swamp. It is never going to be able to be used for anything. And now, you've forgiven a half a million dollars of taxpayer money for something that should have been thrown in the ashcan when they came up with it. My request is that you people start doing for this town what your job is. Now, I wrote them all down what your jobs are, but I would like you all to tell me, not today, I want you to tell me the four or five things that a city governing board is legally and morally responsible for. Trust me, building soccer fields is not on the list. And so, I will... I will call all of you or write your little notes or something, because I want your list of what you think your job is. I started running for the District 2 county board the other day. And honest to goodness, the stuff that goes on at a county level... Now, don't get your head swelled up. Makes you guys look good. Because they are... There's a whole lot of people over there that need to be in jail. Anyway... See what I mean? Anyway, I would like you all to do some real serious thinking about the taxpayer money and what you're doing with it. We need a whole lot less taxpayer money collected for special interest groups. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Applause, please. Next, for public general comment, we have Sophia Lewis. Ms. Lewis, if you would give us your name and your address, and we'll have the lights here. So, you know, when the light's green, you're good to go. When the light turns yellow, you've got about another minute to talk, okay?
I mean, Mr. Mayor, just... Or, Mr. President, excuse me. Just, this is Sophia Lewis, my daughter. And I missed the Bring Your Kid to Work Week, so thought I'd do it tonight. But she has something for a school project she's doing on environmental things, and she's doing a thing on big cats. So, she just wants to talk to us about big cats really quick, if she could.
Perfect. Sophia, the floor is yours.
We live at 2612 Harvard Avenue, for the record. I don't... Introduce yourself.
My name is Sophia Lewis, and I'm doing something about saving big cats. Do you really want to have a world without big cats? Big cats, lions, leopards, cheetahs, tigers, jaguars, and cougars. Big cats increase biodiversity, which makes the rainforest a better place. They help the plants by killing the animals that eat plants. Join me to save big cats, so we can have them around a long time. Plus, you can go to the circus and watch them do tricks at the circus.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
I guess we'll spend the rules on applause. Next on the agenda, we have open public comment for items... For the consent items, non-public hearing items, 3 through 37. I have one speaker request form for item number 23, Tina Malali. Item 23.
Good evening, Mr. President and city councilman. My name is Tina Malali. I live at 6390 Longview Road out in Rapids Alley. Was Tuesday night... I was at the... Or, last Thursday night, I was at the North Rapid Civic Association meeting, and a gentleman from the Parks Department came in and told us about this wonderful program that you guys are planning on having regarding dead and diseased tree removal program. And as a homeowner inside the city limits, I personally have had to take care of my own trees and have paid two other tree removal services to remove my trees. So, when I asked this gentleman from the Park Service why or how this program came about, he mentioned that the program was brought on because the pine beetle is under control. So, they thought the money could go to helping out the dead trees in Rapid City with no real criteria. My question to you is... Or, my response to this gentleman was, why was the program brought up? I mean, when the pine beetle was under control, the money should go back to the taxpayers. You asked us for money to take care of the pine beetles? We gave you money to take care of the pine beetles? They're taken care of? Now, don't continue spending the money that you said was going to go to pine beetles by allowing this program to come on. I mean, there are going to be abuses to this program. I can see it. You're going to refund 75%, and the tree's got to be dead and diseased or a hazard, I believe it was, or there was one... There was four things, and you only have two here, dead and diseased. He had hazardous and one other one. And I can foresee abuses of this particular program when I truly believe that the money should not be going to a program that was never meant for the money that was meant for pine beetle destruction. And since that's under the control, I would really appreciate you considering the fact that this is a program that doesn't really need to exist, and the money should go back to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Tina. At this time, we will close public comment. Now, I ask the council, we have consent items 3 through 37. We can either approve them all, or would anybody like to pull an item? John Roberts.
I'd like to pull 20 and 23, please.
20 and 23. Seeing no other lights in the queue, entertain a motion to approve all other items. Got a motion by Doyle, a second by Nordstrom, to approve all items 3 through 37, less item 20 and 23. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by say aye? Those opposed? Item number 20, Alderwoman Doyle, would you please read that in?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item number 20 is to deny the appeal of onsite wastewater disposal and treatment permit ordinance 13.20 from Kurt Anderson. I will yield the floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Did not see in the queue.
Or, Mr... Yeah, Mr. President. You're in the seat. The reason that I pulled this is Mr. Anderson couldn't be here tonight, and he'd like to have it continued to the next council meeting.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to second to continue item 20 to the next council meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Those opposed? Same? Item 23, Alderwoman Doyle.
Item number 23 is to approve the dead or diseased tree removal program. I will yield the floor.
I have nobody in the queue. All right. Alderman Roberts, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our wonderful new website, I'm trying to pull this up because I want to look at the actual proposed ordinance. I do have a few issues, and I have a few things that I want to clarify, so if I can ask Jeff or whoever I need to ask about it. And I'm having a heck of a time finding the ordinance with our wonderful new... Anyway, one of the things that I was concerned about was the criteria for being able to cut out the trees. And I don't have it sitting in front of me, but I noticed that under the proposed ordinance, it said corporations. Could you read that line off for me, if you would?
Entire corporations, organizations, entities, or groups that own property will be treated as individual property owners for the purpose of this program.
And will they be individual property owners for everything that they own combined or for every single property?
All combined.
All combined. So, if you have somebody that has 200 rental properties, they can only use this one time? Okay?
Correct.
That was one of the concerns that I had. Another concern that I have is people have brought up that this is going to be good for the low-income people, and it's going to be good for people on fixed incomes. Talking to Barb Garcia last week, she was saying the average cost for cutting a tree is between... That we're paying through code enforcement is $700 to $900. So, in this program, you'll pay, depending on the amount of trees, if it's four trees, $175 per tree, or if it's one tree, up to $700. How does that work exactly?
It'd be all conditional, up to 75% of the cost. So, depending on how many trees it is, one tree, two tree, it really would depend per site, per individual.
Because I noticed on later in tonight's agenda, there is, oh, I think, five tree cuttings that went through code enforcement that are coming up later on the agenda. And, yeah, it's through the assessments, through the assessment roll. And I think the average one on there was probably... If you average them all out there, probably around $3,000 or so. I guess my real concern about this ordinance is, I'd love to see this go back to Barb Garcia and that group, if it's possible, and make this for low-income, elderly, disabled, people that need it, and not anybody under the sun, including corporations, and, you know, people that can afford it. If we're going to use this program where it becomes a program for the people that need it and need to have it done, I'm fully for it. But the way it's written right now, I cannot support it. I just cannot support it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I have no other lights in the queue. Alderman Ron Weifelbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make the motion that this would have some... Have it go back to Barb for some review, if that's possible, I guess. Maybe if I get a second, I can... Okay, second.
Got a motion in the second? And use the other floor.
Yeah. I think that what Alderman Roberts is talking about is that, and I think it was mentioned earlier, about the people's responsibility to take care of their own trees. We've got some people that have went through assessments to get trees taken care of. I think that the program would work when it's needed for people that can otherwise do it themselves. I think keeping... Taking care of your yard or your rental property, or whatever the case may be, is your homeowner's situation. And but when you get elderly or you're disabled and you live in Rapid City, and property taxes do get high, expenses do get high, it does cost a lot of money to live here. And if you have a tree that's a safety hazard, and if this program fits for those types of people, if we could do that, I think Barb's kind of the specialist in that area. She has... She is the community resource that we have, that people will have, that can go to her and visit her and find these types of resources. And I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know if that would work in this case with the Parks Department, if we could... If it makes sense and do it that way.
You dragged the question to me?
Yeah, I'm asking, maybe to Mr. Beigler?
Well, I guess I just didn't turn that question over to Mr. Beigler, because I guess as a council, we can do whatever we vote to do. And the motion on the floor right now is to send it back to Barb Garcia, but there's no...
Welcome. Thank you.
You don't want to ask it? Did you want to?
No, I agree with you. I'd love for us to take some of our power back, so I appreciate that.
You know, Alderman Weifelbach, you made my eyes move away from that clock, so I don't know... know how much time to ding you. But, but I'll, I'll just make it up. I'll just make it up. Alderwoman Scott, Alderwoman Scott, I got the power.
Thank you, Council President. May I ask Mr. Beigler a couple of questions, please?
You may.
Thank you. Jeff, on this program, I guess my question is, is if I heard you correctly when you explained this to me, is that the pine beetle program is not done and isn't going away, there just happens to be a cessation or a break here from the pine beetle. But I believe you said that this fund still needs to be available for invasion of other beetles that are coming into our area?
Yes, that's, well, that's correct. There's a possibility of other pests and disease coming into the area and attacking our trees. Not only have we been using this reimbursement for removal of pine beetle infested, but also ipps beetle infested pines that are also have, have been taking over some of the pine species, along with the mountain pine beetle. So while the pine beetle may be currently on the low end, other pests and diseases will be coming here. In particular, the Emerald Ashborer, which is moving its way from, from the Michigan area to the west and will soon be in South Dakota. And when that gets here, we will have a program in place to, to deal with all of those trees as well.
And will that program utilize the money in this current fund?
Yes, but we have a, a cost center currently for urban forestry work in, within our Parks and Recreation budget. Within that cost center, the urban forestry is a line item for refunds and reimbursements. There's currently funds in there still. We have expended some funds this year for reimbursements for pine beetle and ipps beetle removals, but we do still have some funds in there that we can begin to utilize with this expanded tree removal program.
And the funds that are in that program at this time, if I understood you correctly, and I'm just asking for clarification, because maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought the reason you were bringing forward this expansion on this dead and diseased tree was because some of the invasion, invasive bugs that are on the march to us actually take up residence in deceased and dead trees? Or did I misunderstand you?
Yeah, that's not really correct, but the, the ashborer, which will be coming here, will attack live ash. And currently, there is no spray that can effectively take care of it. And the, the result is, is a loss of, of all the ash in, in the area where the infestation occurs. But yes, no, the, the purpose of this program is to remove those either dead or diseased or hazardous trees that pose a hazard to either the public or to the homeowner. It also is, is a program that will take care of those trees in some of the older neighborhoods that have been standing for quite some time in people's front yards and the green space between the sidewalks and the curb. So all of those reasons.
And if this is a line item in your budget, if the refunds and reimbursements in kind line item in your budget, the urban forestry budget, isn't used for that year, it gets put back into general funds and the new budget is re-appropriated, correct?
That is correct.
So I, I guess what I heard Alderman Roberts asking is, so if this wasn't being brought forward to kind of head off some of the invasive species coming into our area, why are, what is the main reason to bring this program forward when it encompasses corporations and companies? I mean, what is the reason you were bringing this forward then? Instead of just leaving it alone until we have the next invasive species?
Well, the reason is, we have a lot of dead trees standing at the moment. And whether they're in a resident's front yard, or whether they're in a business's front yard, it, it, there's still a dead tree that poses a hazard and should be taken care of. Now, whether a person with limited financial means takes advantage of this program, or someone with, that could afford to pay the full amount utilizes this program, the end result is the same, that we get rid of these dead, diseased, and dying trees.
Thank you, ma, our Council President, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. Next, we will go to Alderman Darla Drew.
Thank you, President. I guess I do agree with Councilman Roberts on this, and I would like to see it go to people that really need the, the funding. So I'm trying to understand, with the dead, dying, hazardous, diseased trees, it's actually, in a way, it's continued maintenance for the pine beetle? Is that correct?
Well, the pine beetle infested trees are part of this program as well. That program has not gone away, and that will be part of this program as well. They are considered a diseased or an infested tree as well. So as long as there's a pine beetle or an ipps beetle attacking pines, they will be treated under this program as well.
And so you're reasoning to protect all areas, including corporate areas? I, I'm really not understanding why we just can't go, you know, somehow mark that tree and say, this is a dangerous, a hazardous, whatever kind of tree it is, and you guys got to take care of this, you know? Why couldn't we have that kind of a program, help the people that really need help with, you know, this, this funding? And for those that can afford it, just let them know that they have a hazardous tree, they have a fire in their front yard, and they're going to put it out, you know? Why can't we do something along those lines?
We certainly could, and if you'd feel more comfortable, we could remove that section of this, this proposal and make it residential properties only.
Well, I would, I would like to, to go back to, is it Barb Garcia, to, to give us some kind of an input on how they, that she would see this best implemented. But I think if you have the wherewithal to take care of your trees, that, that should be your, your responsibility. And that they are people in our area that can't. So I would like to help them out, and make sure we help out the rest of our community as well by, by getting rid of these hazardous and diseased trees, and also trying to protect us against the new influx of, of whatever kind of egregious bug we're going to have. So I, I would support this going back for, for another look. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Alderwoman, let's see, Alderwoman Sherdy Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Beigler, if I may.
Sure.
I know it's been a while now, but refresh my memory. You, you came here from Michigan?
Yeah, I did.
And wasn't there some sort of epidemic?
That was the Emerald Ashborer, yes.
It was.
And Ground Zero was the, the community that I worked for before I came here, yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming that someone out there has a full-time job of like tracking where these things go, and so?
Yep.
When you say they're coming here, it's based on data and tracking? So it's not an if, but a when?
Correct.
Okay. How many trees do you anticipate being able to be taken care of with this program?
I don't really know. I don't have a number for you. I know that since this program received some, some media attention, we've had probably a couple of dozen phone calls from individuals that wanted to get on the list.
Okay, and is this something, I mean, I understand it's a line item, so at some point, people could get turned away?
When the funds are gone for that year, the, yes, the refunds will, will dry up until the next budget year, and that's based on whether or not the, that amount is approved again for the following year.
Okay, but you're not sure at this point how many trees theoretically we could address with this program? In the budget available?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a, a number for you.
Okay, can we get that later?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Thank you, Alderman Ritchie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm getting, starting to get confused on what's happening here. So if I may, direct a question to Chief Multivern on this topic, if I may. Do you see this interfering with our current program with the wildfire interface reimbursement program? It sounds like very similar to what we have here.
It is, and it, and what I'm hearing in the discussion a little bit is, is more of a deciduous or a leaf-producing tree versus the traditional, what we relate to, wildfire threats being those that produce a needle, like a pine tree, or something like that. So I understand there is a desire to expand the program, and I think with the communications between the Fire Department and Parks and Rec, and certainly the urban forester, we have a pretty good relationship and a, nearly a day-to-day working relationship, so we would be in support of the expansion of the program. And whether it be a tree that's going to be removed due to a potential fire threat, or a hazardous tree because it's weakened and it's going to fall across a bike path or in a, in a populated area that's being used for recreational purposes, you could probably say that there's risk in both of those situations, and we would support the removal of, of both trees.
Thank you. And if I can direct another question to Mr. Beigler?
Sure.
Or Andy, if you want to just chime in here too. Don't you already see that the lower-income people are already involved in this, or can be applying for this program?
I think it would be a program that people with limited means would be attracted to, yes.
And, and right now, I'm hearing the concern that, that striking the language from just the corporate properties and the like, I haven't got that language in front of me, but just, what's your impression on striking that language?
Well, that is something we could do if that would make the council more comfortable in, in having the target recipient of this program be residential property owners and not corporations or organizations.
Thank you. I'll yield at this time.
Thank you. I have no other, are you in the queue, John?
I was in the queue. I.
I know you. We'll, we'll go back to Alderman Roberts for a minute and 15.
That's not enough. How much time you got left, Ron?
He doesn't have any time left.
Forty years ago, we had the Dutch elm disease come through Rapid City, just decimate the trees in Rapid City. Somehow, the people of Rapid City managed to take care of this problem on their own without government help. But that isn't the point that I'm trying to make. The point I'm trying to make here is, we don't need to be taxing people that are low-to-moderate income people to pay for people that can afford to have their trees done. Period, in my opinion, period. If this is going to be a program that's going to help people with limited incomes that can't do it on their own, then I will support this. I do have one question, though. When this program starts, how are we going to target these trees? Is it going to be through code enforcement? Is urban forestry going to be driving around Rapid City marking trees? How are we going to do the?
An individual who wants to participate in this program will contact the Parks and Recreation Department. We will then send out one of our certified arborists to the residents and speak with the resident and ensure that their tree is a qualifying tree, and that it is actually diseased or dying, and not just hasn't leafed out yet for the year, or something like that. Once that happens, then, then they will be able to contract to have the tree removed, and the reimbursement will take place afterward.
And this contractor's list, I saw that it had to be approved by the city, but I think that's another thing that we need to look at, too, and make sure that if this goes through the language, that they're insured and they're bonded, and, you know, because I don't want to see anybody slipping through the cracks and having some unlicensed contractor drop a tree on their house and it costs them $100,000. But I, I do hope this goes back, so we can have more discussion on it, and hopefully find a way to make it a little more palatable, for me at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Alderwoman Scott for a very brief period.
Yes, I realize I only have 10 seconds, so I'll make this quit. I just had a quick clarifying question on this. We're sending it back for review. Is there a date that we'd like to see this back, like 90 days from now, to make sure that we can address all of the questions that have been brought up at this time? I'm just asking about a date before it comes back to council.
Five years.
No. Does the motion, who made the motion?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? You.
Have it come through.
30 days? Who was the motion maker on that, Heidi?
Ronald.
Okay, so I guess with the motion maker and the secretary, all good. All right. You yield. Alderman Ron Weifelbach, and you've got about two and a half minutes.
Thank you, Mr.
Oh, excuse me, wait. Alderman Lewis hasn't gone yet. I didn't see it, Chad, thanks.
I totally forgot what I was going to ask. You guys need to talk more. I'll have to come back in the queue. Thanks. Wow. I've been sitting next to these old people too long.
Alderman Weifelbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it was just the last council meeting we had, we assessed a gentleman for a couple trees that were dead, and, and I don't think there was any relief for him, there wasn't any mercy for him or anything. I think the total bill was $1,700. The point is, if we're making this a safety issue, if it's a safety issue, it was mentioned here earlier about what we do as a councilperson, people, or whatever, and what we do as city members, this is something that we do do, is safety issues. So if it's a safety issue, and it's disconcerting to our city and to our Parks Department and the people that live here, we need to probably prioritize this, and actually maybe proactively look for these trees that are safety issues. And then at that point, we can, if we bring it back to Barb Garcia, to help some of the people that have lesser opportunity to pay for these, that that can be done. But on the other hand, people that own houses, they understand taking care of the trees is part of their job. So, and, and I'm not here to kill the messenger, this is the, the conversation that we should have from our staff. When something comes up, they need to bring something forward to us. We need to have a good conversation about it, and vet it out, and come up with a program that makes sense, whether we do it or don't do it. What I, I couldn't support, just carte blanche with this, I think that it would be important for some of the elderly people in our community, and some of the people with lesser means that own houses that are squeaking by. If they have a safety issue, and we deem it a priority, then we need to take, we need to help them handle it if there's a possibility, so it doesn't put them in a, in a financial burden. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you, Alderman Weifelbach. We'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I thanks my youthful colleagues, you reminded me why I want to talk. So is there any, may I ask, Bigler, a question?
You sure may.
Mr. Beigler, is there any rush in getting this program going with this delay? Will it cause any potential hazards or spread of the disease quicker because we waited longer? Is there a season for this sort of thing?
Well, if, if the tree's dead, the tree's dead.
Well, yeah, I get that. You're not going to.
I, I don't think a 30-day delay is going to, to harm anything.
I suppose it's the spread as far as the spread of any other further, you know, to further trees, if you're worried about that. Okay, so we're good with that. There's no, it's not like a pine beetle situation when they spread quickly or whatever. I, I, I did almost go to med school, I kind of figured that other part out, but thank you.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, I started looking up the, the language here, and I see it as paragraph number five, removing that one, and I'm not going to make the motion, but I would like a clarification, because Alderman Weifelbach reminded me of a, an incident that took place here, or a complaint that was brought to us a couple of weeks ago, and we denied that claim, and I just wanted to make sure if a person like that is coming forward, he would be eligible for something like this, if we did remove paragraph five.
Yes, if that person would have come to us before, before any of the code enforcement action went into place, they would have been eligible for this program.
Thank you.
Thank you. All, all right, so we have a motion on the floor to run this back 30 days back to, and I'm going to assume that what you want to do is, is to have it come by Public Works first.
Yes.
And that would be the first Public Works meeting then in June. So, everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to open, open public comment for items 38 through 54. I have no speaker request forms. So with that, we will close public comment, and I will ask Alderwoman Scott to read ordinances 38 through item 41 into, into the record.
Thank you. Item number 38 is a first reading of ordinance 6108, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Elizabeth Hunt for Maverick Incorporated for a rezoning from medium-density residential district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located at 510 East Denver and 505 North La Crosse Street. I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oops, discussion. We just blew by this. We just blew by this. Hey, I'm sorry, did you?
I did, yes.
Okay. Sorry, we'll have discussion, Alderman Roberts.
Our council president's ready to go home, I think.
I know.
The only reason I pulled this off was because I had a couple of constituents call me with concerns over this and I just wanted to get it on the record that there was a few people out there. But I also want to get on the record that I do, I do approve of this being done. And I think there's a few people in this room that know, it's the only place in Rapid City I've ever sat next to somebody during a drive-by shooting when somebody was shooting into that motel. So, it will be, I think, wonderful for the PD to have this motel removed. I think it will be wonderful for the neighborhood. And I also think that the people that have concerns about their property values decreasing, I think they're going to be quite surprised that they're not and they probably will increase. So I just wanted to put it on the record that I am very happy this is being done. That's a part of, it's across the street from my ward, kind of a part of my ward, and it's nice to see redevelopment being done in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Roberts. I apologize. Yeah, seeing no further lights in the queue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same. Motion passed. Item 39.
Item number 39 is a first reading of ordinance 6115, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Renner Associates LLC for Ham Investments LLC for a rezoning from central business district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located at 902 Mount Rushmore Road. I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by, all those in favor, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item 40.
Item 40 is a first reading of ordinance number 6116, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by the city of Rapid City to rezone from neighborhood commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located at 720 North Maple Avenue. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passed. Item 41.
Item 41 is a request by Lee and May Osborne for reimbursement for water damage at 2255 North Haynes Avenue in the sum of $20,000. And I believe the Osbournes are here, so I would like to not make a motion at this time until the Osbournes have their opportunity to address the city council.
The Osborne, okay.
They came to the legal and finance committee meeting and they wanted to go ahead and address the full council. At this time, the legal and finance committee sent it to council without recommendation.
Okay.
There were a couple of committee members that did want to make a recommendation one way or the other, but I believe it was Alderwoman Drew wanted to give the Osborne, Osbournes an opportunity to address the full council tonight.
That's correct.
All right, Ms., Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
The floor's yours.
Thank you. You know, there's just a couple of things from the finance meeting that I'd like to clarify. One of the things was, was we didn't want to set a precedence. I can understand the city doing that, but I've, we lived here seven years. I know it's not a long time by old-timer standards, but I've never seen a precedence before where a water main broke overflowing a sewer main and coming into a business. A second concern of mine was that according, and I'm getting my new, my information from the Journal, that it emptied a two-and-a-half-million-gallon reservoir when this water main burst. And so with no shut-off in place, yeah, I understand that the cities, the cities, you know, they say it wasn't negligence on their part, yes, and I agree with that. I understand water mains burst. I work in the construction industry here. You know, we have, we have some different soils and stuff that are hard to deal with. I understand this. But would this flood have occurred if there would have been some kind of shut-off or if they had got it shut off in a more timely manner? I know it did burst in the middle of the night. But basically, our insurance won't pay and the city's insurance doesn't want to pay, which is the way insurance companies generally seem to work. And I don't feel it's very fair for a business, a small business, just starting here, you know? And we built this, we, this is a new shop that we built about 14 months ago and built the city code. It was, it's all brand-new equipment that was damaged and some of it beyond repair. And we also have a floor that's going to have to be changed out. And it's a 20,000, you know, the floor was $12,000 to put in, so by the time you tear it out and lose another couple of weeks' worth of business, the 20,000 is a good deal for the city. Because we're going to, you know, we've already lost one week's worth of business and we're looking at two more weeks down the road, so. I just, you know, I just want, I just want to see if you guys can do anything to help us out. That's all we're asking.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Will you stand by? You may be asked some questions. We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Council President Estes. As it was explained at the legal, oh, first, I'd like to make a motion to deny. And if I can get a second, retain the floor.
We've got a motion in a second to deny and the floor's yours.
Thank you. As it was tentatively discussed at legal and finance committee meeting, I believe the city attorney had weighed in as well as our risk manager, Mr. Smells at the time. There is no city fund. We don't, we don't build into the water rates and the sewer rates to have a refund line item for these types of things. And so that's what the city has insurance for. And the claim was filed with the city's insurance company. And yes, the insurance company did say that there was no claim because the city was not negligent in any way. And it really wasn't the city's fault of what happened. So, without having a fund, unfortunately, the burden does fall on you. As you heard from our tree discussion earlier, some of the stuff just comes out that, you know, stuff happens and property owners have to take care of their.
It's expensive to do business in Rapid City.
I understand.
And we're talking, we're talking a business that does not gross a lot of it.
And I can, and as was also discussed at legal and finance on Wednesday, if the city council wants to take a look at trying to fit into our budget extra fee structure or what it would take to, to set up a refund schedule, that's another course of action the city council would have to set up. It's not currently in, available. There is just nothing in our budget to allow those types of things at this time. So I am so sorry that that happened to you, but I don't think it's a responsibility of the city government at this time. Thank you, Council President.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or President. I'll get ahead of myself yet. Can I direct a question towards Public Works, please?
Yes.
Mr. Tech, quick question for you. Do you have any idea how much we spend on this a year approximately as far as, I mean, how many break a year? How often this happens? Just any, if you, I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm just.
I don't know that I can answer it. If I were to have to guess tonight at a number, we'd probably average 25 to 40 water main breaks a year.
Okay.
Keep in mind, we have well over 400 miles of water mains in the city.
Is there, has anybody ever looked at what it would cost to have a fund for this kind of thing?
No, we've never looked into that.
Because it would be pretty extensive, I mean, a lot of work for the staff to do that?
It would be a very gross estimate. I don't know that we could come up with an annual amount that would be consistent from year to year. Some years may be pretty light and some years might be very heavy.
Okay. I just look at this and I think these four folks didn't do anything to have this happen. Now they've got a business that's 20 grand in the hole. And did you have insurance, folks?
Yes, we did. But our insurance.
Is it more than liability? Is it full coverage?
It's for liability and, and for, but our insurance, first thing, they said, well, it was a city water main that broke and flooded your place, we're not going to pay for it.
Right. I just look at this and I think, there's got to be some happy medium here, but I don't know what it is because I don't know how you factor in exactly what, you know, this is going to cost us, the ratepayers, I guess. If it's, you know, we're talking a couple bucks a year or something like that, I don't see why we wouldn't do it. But if it's, you know, a huge increase, that's why I'm kind of trying to think out loud up here as I do go through this. I know that in the contracting business, something happens, it's always, it seems to end up on me no matter what it is. So, you know, as a private contractor, I always kind of struggle with that when the city gets out, is able to wiggle out everything. Not that we're wiggling out of it deliberately up here, but it's just, I just got to think about this a little bit. I definitely have sympathy for you folks, because obviously you did nothing wrong and that's why I'm, wish we could, one of my colleagues maybe has a little smarter viewpoint than me. I'll yield.
Alderwoman Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I direct some questions to Trevor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Trevor. How you doing?
Good. Trevor Schmelz, Risk Manager for the city.
Thanks, Trevor. My question for you is that, I mean, and I just, I essentially want it put on the record so that people watching at home aren't confused because we have talked a lot about in years past, the cleanup program that we have. Could you talk about how that was utilized in this case?
Yes.
So that it's two separate things?
It is. The city has a resolution that helps during times of sewer backups and even water backups to help with professional cleanup costs. And the building owner for the Haynes Shopping Mall there, it's Jim Stanek is his name. He did file a claim. His claim was also denied for property damage, but since he paid for the cleanup costs for the clothes mentor and from the beauty salon, he did get to recoup that, recoup that cleaning cost underneath the resolution. So we did pay into this. It was about $10,000 for cleanup cost reimbursement. But unfortunately, under that resolution, it does not cover personal property and real property.
Okay. And do you know how much, off the top of your head, we actually spend out of that fund every, or for these types of circumstances every year, just for the cleanup?
I don't. I know Dave Van Cleve has some numbers. This last year, 2015, with the amount of water rainfall that we had, we've seen an increase in sewer backups. I don't know on average. A lot of that information, I take in the information and then pass it over to the department because it's their fund. It doesn't come out of insurance, usually.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I yield.
Thank you. Alderwoman Drew.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Dale Tech. The Osbournes noted earlier that there was a shut-off valve problem. Is that indeed the case with, with this particular, and there's 2 million gallons of water was released? Is that correct?
The estimate of how much water was lost in the system, 2.5 million, that's probably right. As far as a shut-off is concerned, when a water main breaks in the middle of the night, if there isn't somebody standing right at a valve to turn it off and it runs for an hour, it's going to drain a lot of water. I don't know that there's an issue with not having a shut-off valves. There's valves throughout our system. It's just a question of getting the leak detected and getting it shut off.
Well, it would seem to me in this, in this case, where we're talking about such large amounts of water, that there should be some kind of a valve system that would prevent this. I know, and Lewis is shaking his head, but I, I, I think that even though we are not responsible, that in some way, we're accountable. And that's, that's my feeling on this towards the Osbournes.
See, no other lights in the queue. Right now, we have a motion to deny. Seeing no other lights, no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have items 42 through 53. If no one on the council wants to pull any for any reason, chair would entertain a motion to approve all of them in one motion. Got a motion in a second to approve all license applications, items 42 through 53. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, we have mayor's item, the report on the 2016 Black Hills Stock Show, Katie Handy. Katie, I'm going to turn on the light. You've got three minutes.
Awesome.
Oh. I, she knows me.
Well, Mr. President, members of the city council, my name is Katie Handy and I'm the marketing manager for both the Black Hills Stock Show and the Central States Fair. And it is with great pride that I present with you the 2016 success of the Black Hills Stock Show. But before I do so, I think it's only important that we understand where we've been. And the stock show was actually started in 1959 as an opportunity to inform our rural, or inform our urban residents of Rapid City about rural lifestyles. And it was also an event that was started by three breeds of cattle sales. And at those sales, people were able to come in and they could market their livestock. And it started with three breeds being Angus, Hereford, and also short-horned cattle. Today, we are actually the fourth-largest stock show in the nation. We follow behind the Houston Stock Show, the San Antonio Stock Show, and also the Denver National Stock Show. All those stock shows, when you think about it, are actually in huge populations of million, of a million people. So being able to be fourth in the nation in a city of 60,000 is a huge accomplishment. And it can't, and we can't do that without the support that we get from not only our, our volunteers and our members within our organization, but without our city council and also our county commissioners that are always supportive of our event. When we think about the stock show, we always think about the rodeos and the concerts and the beer festivals and everything that goes along with it. But we sometimes fail to realize the livestock aspect of that. And it's truly just the core of the stock show. Not only was it the driving force of how we got here, but it's a core of rural lifestyles in South Dakota. And agriculture is actually, South Dakota's number-one industry. And when we market livestock at the stock show, we're dealing with somebody's business and we're dealing, they're coming out to the stock show to purchase for their next year and their next generation of livestock producers. So I was just going to take a quick, a quick amount of time just to explain our different livestock sales that we have. We have 13 different livestock sales. We grossed about $2.2 million within that week of the Black Hills Stock Show. So the first, the first livestock sale that we have is actually a two-day horse sale. And as you can see in the map, we actually attract about 18 different states of people that come to Rapid City. And during that time, that is all data that we're collecting down in Rushmore Hall at the Rushmore Sap, at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. So we get 18 states of people that are coming to buy cattle, this, or buy horses. And this last year, our horse sale grossed $1.17 million, which is a huge accomplishment when you think of six years ago, it grossed $300,000. When you look at the buyer's spending or just on a tourism aspect, we figure about 300 horse owners come out to the stock show just to market their horses. They stay for about three nights with an average daily spending of $183, which totals $164,000 for just our horse, horse sale consignors. When you look at the buyers, we get about 1,070 buyers. They're seeing two event days at, in Rapid City for spending about an average of 183. That's a, that's a typical tourism number that, that's used with the state of South Dakota. For their total of $391,000, for a total for estimated spending for the horse sale is $5,556,000. And that's coming into Rapid City for our event. The livestock sales attracts about 15 buyers from 15 different states. As you can see it, the Midwest plays a huge role in that. We get cattle that's consigned a lot from South Dakota, but our second major state of people that are consigning is from Wisconsin, actually. And those consignors are traveling out to market their livestock at the Black Hills Stock Show. When you look at the estimated spending for our livestock consignors, it's about $314,000. And our livestock buyers' estimated spending while they're here at the stock show is $461,000 for a total of $776,000. That's attributing to the Rapid City and the state economy. Our vendors play an important part as well. We have vendors that come out for the 10-day event from 19 different states. And in fact, we are one of the best trade shows in the nation. We continually are churning down different vendors mainly because they don't fit into the show or that we might have a different vendor that's already offering that service. When you look at the vendors' daily spending, that actually totals into nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. And those are all different aspects of the, of the stock show that not only support our hotel rooms, that support our restaurants, but it also supports our sales tax within Rapid City. The last slide I'm showing you is actually, we are actually a national market. And not only do people come and they are shopping at the stock show and they're coming out to Rapid City, but a lot of us are, a lot of people are watching us online. We'll get about five thousand people that'll view different sales throughout the week. And this map here indicates everybody that's watching us. It's a great tool for us because we actually see a lot of people that'll come out to the stock show afterwards. So, just in recap, just by the numbers, the Black Hills Stock Show has an economic impact of about twenty-one million dollars. And of that twenty-one million dollars, fifteen-point-two million dollars is a direct economic impact. Three-point-two is an indirect economic impact, and three-point-four is an induced economic impact. We are a membership-driven organization that produces the Black Hills Stock Show. And with that, we're very proud in the fact that we donate about a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars to different organizations in Rapid City so that they can produce different events anywhere from the National Guard to the Boys and Girls Club. We actually let, we support those. Throughout the year, we're just not an event that happens ten days out of the year. And throughout the year, we actually host about two-hundred-and-eighty-one event days at the Central States Fairgrounds. With that being said, I would like to thank you on behalf of our Central States Fair staff and also the Board of Directors for your support.
Thank you, Katie. Alderman Ron Waferbuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Katie, very much. This little jewel that we have there has always been, basically kind of hidden behind the scenes. And it's, it's time that citizens of Rapid City and us up here understand the economic value that the Central States Fair. And there are hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of volunteers. People that, because of their heart, where they're at, with the community, with the, with the stock show, with the livestock, the people in the area, the results that you can get from volunteers. It's amazing. This is by far the number-one event that our civic center in Rapid City has, by far, bar none. Maybe even combined of all the events for the total population of people that visit for this stock show. And we greatly appreciate, and I know the citizens of my ward greatly appreciate what you guys do. I think that going forward, that when we're looking at things that can be built upon, things that can be looked at and said, where were they done right? I think there's, there's a place to start, looking right there. What can we grow on, what is our community really about? And, and, you know, we're a farm and ranch community here, and we bring a lot of people in, and these people stay in the hotels. And you can go on any given weekend or day and find something happening down there, find people doing team penning, whatever it may be. Trailers everywhere, all over town, and nobody really knew what was going on except for that the hotels are full, there's people eating with cowboy hats all over the community. It's just, it's, I can't even tell you how much we appreciate what you do for the city and what you guys economically and what you provide down there with the hundreds of volunteers. And I don't even know what your, how many people are on your staff full-time?
Full-time, we have six in our office.
Six people in your office full-time?
We're the only stock show in the nation that actually operates both a stock show and a fair.
That's, that's, it's amazing, it's, it's. Someday, you should bring us in the list of all your volunteers so we could read their names.
Absolutely.
And let the people in our community know what you guys are doing down there and the benefit that you bring. And I know, I know, I know you guys don't, don't get anything out of the Bed Boos bath tax or the, the one percent or two percent alcohol tax. You guys get none of that money for funding. This is all done on your own and your hundreds of volunteers. I just, I just have to reiterate that, and I appreciate it, Katie, thank you for the presentation, it was first class.
Thank you, Ron, we'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to acknowledge with gratitude and thanks to the stock show and the staff and the volunteers.
Got a motion and a second to acknowledge. I guess if I could, I would, I'd like to have an opportunity, if I could just say a few things. I spent eleven years on the Central States Fair Board and president for three years, putting on this, helped, helped put on the stock show, and it's an organization I really believe in. And it's just kind of crazy, I mean, to, to think of the, thinking outside the box that goes on down there, to try to, to try to bring people to the stock show that normally wouldn't come, you know, and things like hide-and-horn show and, and, you know, dance contests or quilt shows and things like that, you know? A lot of times, you just, you think, you think about a stock show, you just think about, you know, an eighty-point bull ride is the only thing that's exciting, and, and that is important. But, 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 but you got to have other things to try, to try to increase the crowd and increase the traffic and bring in the people who normally wouldn't go to a everyday stock show. So, again, and, and most, I believe I speak for everybody up here. Thank you, Katie, and thanks for not sending Ron Jeffries. We're all going to get home at a decent time. We have a motion on the floor and no further discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? Thanks again. At this time, we will open public, open public hearings for items fifty-five through sixty. The Chair has no speaker request forms for items fifty-five through sixty. So, at this time, we will close public hearing. And I will ask Alderwoman Doyle to, to read in items fifty-five through sixty to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, item number fifty-five is an alcohol license for Charles T. Wallstring Business Azvita Sana Olive Oil Company LLC, six-twenty-seven St. Joseph's Street, for retail wine license. Move approval.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Fifty-six.
Item number fifty-six is second reading of Ordinance six-one-zero-seven and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Noonie and Sale for David C. Rogers and Patrick R. Kiefert, personal representatives of the estate of Irma F. Rogers, for rezoning from General Commercial District to Office Commercial District for property generally described as being located at sixteen East Philadelphia Street, and I move approval.
Motion in a second to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same. Fifty-seven.
Item number fifty-seven is second reading of Ordinance number six-one-zero-nine and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request by Stanley Design Group for Rapid City Parks Department for rezoning from Park Forest District to Public District for property generally described as being located at six-twenty-six East Fairmont Boulevard. I move approval.
Got a motion in a second to approve, seeing no, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same. Item fifty-eight.
Item number fifty-eight is second reading of Ordinance six-one-one-zero and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. A request, a request by AE-two-S for Village at Skyline Pines LLC for rezoning from our Office Commercial District to General Commercial District for property generally being described as located at ten-fifty Fairmont Boulevard. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same. Item fifty-nine, please.
Item fifty-nine is the second reading of Ordinance number six-one-zero-three and ordinance to amend certain provisions concerning digital signs, sign credits, and spacing of off-premises signs by amending section seventeen point five-zero-point-zero-eight-zero and seventeen point five, five-zero-point-zero-nine-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, those, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same. Item sixty, please.
Item number sixty is request by Spurlet Consulting, Inc. for a vacation of right-of-way for properly, property generally described as being located on Wilmus Street north of Sidney Drive. Make a motion to continue to the May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen city council meeting.
Motion in a second to continue, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those same. We'll go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle. Okay, next item is bills, sixty-one. Bill list for May second, two thousand sixteen, five million eight-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand seventy dollars and seventeen cents. And the Chair will recognize Charity Doyle.
I need to abstain, sir.
Would the record show that Alderwoman Doyle will be abstaining from this? Got a motion in a second to approve the bill list with, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes with one abstention, Alderwoman Doyle. Most do adjourn, good night, thank you.